And we want to welcome you all to the January 12th, 2012 City Council Meeting. Wish all of you a Happy New Year, and this is the first meeting of our new year. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Pastor Jeff Bargwart of the First Lutheran Church. Would you please stand?
Let us pray. Holy God, we thank you for the day that you have given to us, for the people that we have met, for the interactions that we have shared with them. We thank you, God, for the freedom that you have given to us in this country, and we pray that you have blessed the leaders of our nation, the leaders of our state, and especially here tonight, the leaders of our city as we gather. Give them wisdom and understanding as they conduct business, that all things are done with compassion and love as a sign of your presence in this place. Bless our city, God, that we may be a people who are unified in vision and purpose, and that show love to our neighbors in all that we do. All of this we ask in your holy and precious name. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, council. Hope everybody had a good holiday, and I know you did. Well, let me go ahead and address that before we get started. Tonight, I wore my crimson in honor of Mr. Manley and the Alabama Roll Tide. Unfortunately, my LSU kitty cats forgot to come to the game. But there's always next year. There's always next year. So congratulations, buddy. All right. Okay, first item is city council, or excuse me, citizen comments. I do not have any cards except for some of the public hearing items. Is there anybody here that'd like to speak to any matter that maybe didn't get a chance to fill out a speaker card? Okay, if not, we'll move to our presentation items. The first item is a presentation of a proclamation commemorating National Mentoring Month, and I'd like to ask the mentors to please stand. All right. Thank you all very much for being here tonight, and most importantly, for the job you all do as mentors. So we thank you all very much. You all can be seated. I'm sorry. We just wanted to recognize you all. Okay, National Mentoring Month, January 2012. January is National Mentoring Month, a time to celebrate the positive impact of quality programs and volunteer mentors that invest in young people's lives that makes a positive difference. Partners in Prevention mentoring programs play a powerful role in preventing substance abuse and youth violence, as well as boosting academic achievement and workforce readiness through volunteers serving as mentors and forever friends and co-pilots. City of Longview would like to thank the 168 mentors and those serving on the Mentoring Advisory Council. So therefore, I, J. Dean, by the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Longview, do hereby proclaim January 2012 as National Mentoring Month in Longview. Thank you very much.
Do you mind if we have the mentors come up? Will the mentors please come up? And Sean, Hera, we'll take a quick picture. So if you all will stand again, please, and come forward. And I just want to say, as they're coming up, and you'll come all the way up. Johnny, will you lead our group up? Our mentors are really those special people in the community that give their time each week out of their busy schedule to come and meet with the kids weekly at the campuses. So we really appreciate it.
Okay, y'all come on up here. You've got to come up to our fancy dais. Is that saying it right, Sean? All right. Everybody come up here. We'll get all up here. Come on, we've got plenty of room. Yeah, I'll get right here. My head be in the way. Give everybody a chance to return to their seats. Thank you all for coming. Our next presentation item is a presentation on Poverty in America Awareness Month. I think Holly Fuller is here. There she is. Okay. Hello, Miss Holly. Good evening to you. Over 37 million residents in America, 4 million in the state of Texas, and 20.3% of Longview families live in a state of poverty. The federal poverty guideline has set at $22,350 annually for a family of four. Partners in Prevention Circles of East Texas strives to reduce the number of those living in low income through community awareness, education, Bridges Out of Poverty presentations, and Getting Ahead classes. City of Longview supports the initiative to educate its citizens with more than 500 volunteer hours contributed. So therefore, I, J. Dean, by the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Longview, do hereby proclaim January 2012 as Poverty in America Awareness Month in Longview. Thank you, Holly. Appreciate all your efforts. Okay, council, next item is our consent agenda. Excuse me, item C, Presentation of the Annual Report on the City of Longview Workforce Development, Workforce Diversity Plan and Related Accomplishments. Carrie Heiko.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Willard. Tonight, I'm pleased to bring you the first annual report of our city's workforce diversity plan. And just to quickly recap for your constituents how we got to this point, city staff began working with the Race Relations Applicant Diversity Team in January of 2010, and the topics that we looked at were not only the employee demographics, but also recruitment practice. And we ended up isolating each decision point within the application process to examine those carefully, and then also looking at new hire demographics. And before we move on, I would really like to recognize the Race Relations Applicant Diversity Team members that may be here tonight. If you wouldn't mind standing, please. I know Steve Crane is here, Vic Farma.
What about Brandon?
Brandon. It's every now and then, Brandon. Yeah, Brandon. Thank you so much for coming, and without their help, it really lended valuable insight into our process and helped us develop this plan. In July of 2010, city staff decided that with the collaborative work of the two city staff and ADT, it really indicated a need that we needed to redouble our efforts in actually recruiting, hiring, and sustaining a diverse and qualified workforce that more closely resembled our community that we serve in. So we formed a team of city employees. It was a cross-section across departments, all jobs, race, age, gender, to take a look at each of the components, and they helped assemble the components of the plan. We used existing teams also to look at training and development and things of that nature. And then in December of 2010, you probably remember that I did bring the plan to you at that time. The plan, if anybody would like to see it in its entirety, is on our city website, and we'll put an update shortly of the first annual report. Remember that the purpose of this plan is just to be a guiding document to facilitate the hiring, development, and promotion of qualified diverse employees, and it also promotes and develops an inclusive and respectful work environment. It just provides that umbrella document for us. It's a fluid and working document, so we can change the objectives and strategies as needed, and if you see anything that you would like for us to work on, we can tweak it. When we're using the term diversity, I would like to point out, when we use it in the document, it's not intended necessarily to just be synonymous completely with the term minority as it's used when we're talking about federally protected groups, but diversity includes all of the ways in which we're different. It includes, of course, the innate characteristics like our age and gender and race, physical abilities, but also our acquired characteristics like the experiences we bring, our education, our religion, our socioeconomic status even. So the plan is not intended to promote or demote any group or characteristic over another, but rather to help the city organization examine how differences within the workforce make sense for business and could be beneficial for us all. Now, real quick, as we're going to look at the EEO job categories, I want to remind you of the positions that fall within the categories. This is how we divide our data. The methodology, real quick, that we use is a measuring stick to compare our statistics against our labor forces using the federal government's U.S. Census data of the available workforce in Gregg County. So it's those people who are available to work, and the Census people have been able to break that data down into these seven categories recognized by the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. And you all in your packets at the very back have an appendix that give a full description of each of these categories, along with the actual data from our September employee roster for all the incumbents, names removed, but it has their race and their gender and their job title, so you can get a feel for the different positions that fall in here. But let's take a quick look at these categories, and I'll just provide a brief description of each. The first one on the slide is officials and administrators, and obviously, this is where your managers and your directors will fall under, but for some reason with the EEOC, they have also put inspectors in that category, so our sanitarians, building inspectors are also in that category. The professionals, these are positions where knowledge is usually acquired through college or it's a highly specialized training program that somebody's gone through. Quick examples, librarians, our attorneys, accountants, certain analysts, but I also want to point out that our upper-level police and fire department ranks also fall within the professional series. Technicians, these are positions that make sense. I mean, it's our IT folks, radio operators, water inspectors, technicians, supervisors, police sergeants, positions that require usually specialized post-secondary education or on-the-job training that's highly specialized. Protective services, this will be your frontline police department, fire department personnel, as well as your animal control officers and warrant officers. Administrative support, self-explanatory, but our library folks, our assistants and architects fall into that, court clerks, things of that nature. Skilled craft workers are those in jobs with special manual skill and have to have a thorough specialized knowledge. These would be your heavy equipment operators, your water plant operators, mechanics, and then service maintenance workers are your maintenance workers, custodial workers, and even some recreation assistants would fall under that, your solid waste operators as well. So knowing that, let's begin by looking at a comparison of our organization's race demographics in our city staff. And what I've done is, I'd like to show you a comparison from the last time we met in 2009, 2010, and then I have the September data from 2010, 2011. And let's take a look broadly at this slide first, and then we'll hone in, because I know there's a lot of data on it. You see the fiscal year 2009, 2010 on the left, and then the 2010, 2011 on the right. If you just carry that down, the data applies to those fiscal years. At the very top, we have officials and administrators, and right below that, City of Longview employs, and this has not only the hard data, but also the percentages, and then a measurement against the Gregg County workforce. The yellow shaded areas are areas in which we do need to prioritize. These are the areas that we need to work in, and we're using an 80% rule of thumb, and you may remember, this is a standard benchmark that the EEOC uses to help you prioritize in where you're going to work. Obviously, we'd like to be closer to 100% of our community, but this just gives us a way to prioritize and focus. So you can see that we do need to work in the areas of officials and administrators. I would like to point out, though, that we had seven minority race last year, and now we have five, and it has dropped us from 91.4% to 64.2. So you can see with the small pool that we're dealing with, that it really drops you down. We had two retirements that occurred, an assistant fire chief, and then a building inspector that left, and the incumbents that were hired were Caucasian. The professional series, we need to work in that area as well, technicians and protective services, they're all on this slide. I want to point out with the professionals that 57% of this pool do belong to police and fire department upper ranks. So just keep that in mind in that we do not hire from outside into those higher-level ranks. It's highly unusual to do that. And so we're going to have to start at the ground level, which will take several years, and build people and grow them within the organization and their departments.
Just one second.
Sure.
Let me ask you a question, just while we're on those two particular areas, because it was sort of the same way the last time. But when you talk about officials and administrators and professionals, what I'd like to see is, you talked about retirement, but also the attrition factor, okay?
Yes.
Because those jobs just don't turn over.
Right.
Okay, and I don't think those, the numbers don't look good, but how much turnover do you have then? I think you need to, some way or another, put information in there that shows, you know, the attrition factor or lack of an attrition factor that takes place in these categories.
I did provide a slide or two coming up where you'll be able to see a little bit of that, Mayor, and if you would like to see more detail in that regard, let me know.
Okay.
But yes, right now, I'm just dealing with the way the employees look right now, but I will show you some separation data that's kind of telling. The technician series, 19% of the technicians are police sergeants, and currently, we do have one female that is within the sergeant rank, but it's just, but they have no minority race in that regard. We did hire one black female in our sanitation department, so we have a positive. You see that it's moved up in the technician series one additional, and that's because of that hire. Moving on to the rest of the categories, administrative support, skilled craft workers, service maintenance, you can tell that really we're over the 80% rule of thumb. In some cases, we're actually kind of over. These are the areas where we can develop these employees, hopefully, if they're wanting to take advantage of some of our programs and maybe move on up into supervision, even management positions. But these are not going to be our focus areas this next year. The next thing that I'd like to show you is a quick comparison of the minorities, and I'm still talking about racial minorities, that were hired over the last three years in the top section of this table versus the minority employees that were separated from the City of Longview. And it is divided out by the EEO categories, so you can kind of get a feel that as we are hiring them in, they're leaving us. And you can see that it was awash in 2008, 2009. If you're just looking at the totals, 2009, 2010, it was 28 versus 29, and then 38 versus 37. So we're not retaining, I mean, we need to be looking at some retention tools. So this is something that we'll continue to discuss and talk about with our Diversity Advisory Council, et cetera.
And what would you attribute the turnover? In other words, there's attrition there.
There is. If we just look at the categories that we need help in, I can tell you real quick, just this last, well, all three years combined, officials and administrators, three of four of them were retirements, and one was an actual termination, separation. The professional series, both of those were retirements. Technicians, four of the six technicians were terminations. We had environmental health, public safety communications, and court, and then two left voluntarily. And then in the protective services area, we had one retirement, three who left, who quit just voluntarily, and then one termination. So we do, you know, we do examine these. I do have an age slide that I'll be showing you shortly as well, so you can kind of see how our, that our employee staff is aging, especially in these upper levels. And it may provide, you know, opportunities, of course, for the future.
What's happening there? Where you got 20 in 2010, 2011, is that big turnover there?
Yes. The oil field has really opened up, so we're losing quite a few to the oil field. Even our police officers are, we've had several so far this fiscal year, which it's not reflected in this data that have left for the oil field. But then we do see higher levels of termination at these lower levels. One thing that I'm going to, I might as well mention now, is that we've participated in a pilot program with Circles of East Texas, and you probably know it through Holly Fuller's group, Partners in Prevention. We've been sending city employees through the program in hopes that when they learn the hidden rules of the workforce and as they are coached and mentored and developed, that maybe that will help retaining folks in that level. I'm, you know, but that's, we don't have enough data to look at that, but that's one area that we see promise. Next, I just wanted to provide just a quick slide on female staff. When we look at it using the same tables, measuring against the Gregg County labor force like we did with our racial minorities, we do need to work in the areas of professionals, technicians, and service maintenance, so I wanted to bring that forward to you. We're looking good in the officials and managers area, but, you know, much of our workforce is traditionally male-dominated and traditionally male-positioned, so we're starting to see some improvement in that regard. But with the age of our city staff, overall, the average age of city staff members is 43 years of age, but I wanted to break it out by the categories that we're looking at. You can see the officials and administrators is up there at 49 years of age, and you know with the TMRS, our retirement system, that employees can retire with 20 years of service at any age if they so choose. We do see most people putting in at least 25 years before they retire, but you can tell that there will be some opportunities. We went ahead and broke it out with age ranges down below, so you can just kind of see that there will be some opportunities very shortly for employees to move up if they have the education and experience, or for us to go externally and recruit. Now, job applicant data, I really did not want to bog you down with a lot of statistics. So, and for the sake of brevity, I've got two slides that I wanted to show you just for the four categories that we need to be working in, and just give you a feel of what it looked like last year, and then let you know that if you would like to come and look at the hard data, feel free to come to either an ADT meeting or a Diversity Advisory Council meeting. We examine the data with them, and then, of course, HR is continually monitoring, as well as the city manager's office. But I would like to point out just a few things. Officials and administrators, just in 2010, 2011, we only had three vacancies. We received 42 applications. You see the data there. I just wanted you to see that 19 of those applicants were considered having the minimum qualifications. Only one minority was referred, and when I'm speaking of minority on this slide, it's racial minority, okay? So there was no interviews, and none were hired. Two of the three hired were female, though, so that was good, and two of the hires were internal hires, where they moved from different departments on up. On the professional side, the vacancies were just two, the community development administrator job and the specialist job, these are both in the housing department, and you can see that we received quite a few applications. 46 referred, 27 were minorities, four minorities were interviewed. They decided to move an individual up from the specialist position up to the administrator job, and then they hired externally for the development specialist position, but both were Caucasian. And then with the technicians, real quick, we had several openings here, quite a few telecommunications operator positions, and then most of the others were just single hires. Quite a few applications received. You can see the data here, bottom line at the bottom, is that two minorities of 19 were hired, but 11 of the 19 we hired were female in that category. And then, of course, for police and fire, just the fire apprentice position and the firefighter paramedic job was open, 260 applications, 142 total referred. Of those 20 were minorities, but we ended up not hiring any minorities at that time. But I can tell you, we just hired, we just had another large process, and we do have one racial minority that we've hired, no females. But they're slowly, they're plugging away, I can tell you. We'll talk about the fire department in a few minutes, but they are really, really working hard. So some accomplishments, real quick. Of course, as soon as we finished developing the plan, the city manager created his Diversity Advisory Council. It's a nine-member council. We met monthly. They wanted to go into the departments to find out what their jobs entailed, what the requirements were, and how they recruited for their positions, and where they would like to recruit, and just to get a feel for all of the different jobs that were out there. Another thing that came of this team was, we had a discussion about if we're going to maintain a philosophy of "grow your own," how can we get people to grow? We have a tuition reimbursement program, but it was discovered that there's a barrier there for people who are in positions of a lower economic status. So you all remember, in July, we came to you and asked you if we could use any of your dollars to establish an educational assistance program where it advances money for employees who earn less than $35.5 a year annually to advance the money for them to attend school. It's been fairly successful. We've, you know, it was a quick turnaround, a fall semester occurred right away, and we had at least four, I want to say, who participated, and we're trying to push now for the new semester. So that was a really big accomplishment. We all feel very proud of that. A recruiting and hiring team was formed. These individuals not only helped Bonnie, our HR generalist, with job fairs, but they also were getting into the schools and speaking to kids, trying to get them excited about careers in public service. We put on a City of Longview job fair. The fire apprenticeship program is huge. Haven't seen, you know, huge successes right now, but it's going to take some time for us to get individuals of minority persuasion in there and into the program, excited about the program. We've had lots of discussions about why we're not seeing folks take advantage of this program, which is one reason why they're really hitting the schools very hard. Right now, I think they have nine total in the apprenticeship program. They just hired two that just entered it, so they had seven in the apprenticeship program, and then they have six firefighter paramedics that came of their hiring process. I don't believe of the, they just hired one minority, so of the nine, just one. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They're getting in the schools. You see, I have a few little bullet points here. We did a Region 7 video. Several of our staff members, including both chiefs, are members of the Pine Tree Career Technology Group, or attending their program, their boards. We have the LEDCO Career Talks. We're going out into the schools through LEDCO. We participate in Globe, and we just are doing numerous things, didn't want to bog you down with a whole lot. We're participating in the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Task Force for Workforce Readiness, of course. One of our objectives was to diversify our city marketing material, so we've started to do that, and I'm sure you've seen some of that out there. Interview panels, this came up with ADT when we had discussions with them. This is one area that is the real subjective area when we're hiring, and so we have really made a big push within our organization to highly recommend diverse interview panels for the hiring process, for positions, all positions, except for those that are more maintenance in nature, where there's a high turnover, and it just doesn't make business sense to do that, and we don't really, when you look at our statistics, we're not down in those areas anyway, so, but you'll see it with the manager levels, professionals, technical areas, and police and fire have always done it. But you'll see it with the manager levels, professionals, tech, technical areas, and police and fire have always done it. So, we've had a big push there. Training, we did some training on interviewing. We did an HR training camp that encompassed employment law, hiring practices, things of that nature, to make sure our supervisors are trained. We have a supervisors' network that really trains up brand-new supervisors or potential supervisors, where diversity is brought up and, and the value of it. And then, we also have just flat, regular diversity classes, and we're bringing in variety of trainers to come in, and not just focus on one particular area, race, gender, but everything from generations on, the generational piece. So, we've really been focusing on that. The circles I mentioned to you at job fairs, and then, of course, the multicultural festival, and we participated in a Lulac event this year as well. Just real quick in closing, I just wanted to say just a couple of things that the city does understand that workforce diversity is impacted by many factors and cannot solely be measured numerically. We can't have a single policy, strategy, or plan that will be just solely sufficient. So, rather, the principle of diversity is best gonna be accomplished over time. It's gonna take us some time. It's gonna be incremental. We're gonna see positive change over that time, and just having, if we have an ongoing emphasis, I think we'll see that positive change. Workforce diversity stretches far beyond just the equal employment opportunity piece for all job applicants. It also entails providing our, an inclusive work environment where individuals are respected for their unique differences, for their experiences, their skills, and their knowledge, and when they feel appreciated, their morale's gonna go up, and they're gonna be more engaged in their work. So, we're gonna see service levels improve, customer service improve, and that sort of thing. And another byproduct of a diverse workforce, of course, is this broadened perspective that they bring. There's gonna be increased creativity as, as we all come together, increased innovation, and, and also, our problem solving, I think, will improve. So, the City of Longview remains committed, of course, to the fair treatment and lawful treatment of all their applicants, their employees, their citizens, and we will continually examine the recruitment and hiring policies, our training, the way we develop employees, all of these things, to increase diversity of our qualified job candidates, remove any hidden barriers, enhance employee knowledge, skills, and abilities, and to support continuous learning for all of our employees. And with that, that's my report for you this evening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer those.
Counsel questions, comments? Ms. Cashin?
First of all, I appreciate your efforts, and the efforts of the Race Relations Committee, and the city manager, too, for creating the Diversity Advisory Council. The officials and administrators level, that highest level, you have acknowledged that we really need to work on that area, and I would just like to really suggest that we perhaps take an even closer look at that, so that we can ultimately have a broader cross-section at that level, the administrative team level, so that all of the, all of the EEO, EEO categories are represented. I, I think that's representative of our community. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Willard?
Mayor, thank you. Counsel, just one little addendum that we didn't get a lot of press or coverage on, that I think's a really a positive thing. We had a, our first female in the history of the Longview Fire Department to promote up to lieutenant, a company officer rank, and that was Amy Dodgen, and her promotional ceremony, along with some others, was last week, I believe it was. I think that's really a neat thing that has happened, and she's worked hard and had the opportunities, and so... How long, what's our history, chief? How long have we been a fire department? Since the eighteen-seventies, or?
Seventy-six, I believe it was.
Eighteen-seventy-six, so it's taken a while for that to happen, but we're, we're real proud about that.
Good deal. Let me make a couple of comments to you, carry on, on this report, just what, what I, what I see and what I'm hearing. Number one, when you go over the positions in those four categories, and how many applicants you had, and then, how many minority applicants you had, you can see a, a real disparity there. And so, we have to try to find more qualified applicants and try to determine, you know, what, what skill sets, et cetera, needed in these jobs, so when we go to promoting, we, we give more people an opportunity to, to apply. The other thing that I see is, and I believe, you know, we need to promote equality, so, you know, minorities feel they actually have a chance. I think there's a historical situation that exists, well, I'm this, or I'm that, and they're not gonna hire me, so I'm not gonna apply. And part of what we're doing, in this diversive, diversification team and everything we're doing, we just gotta continue to make sure, and, and, and it's only gonna come, you know, the proof, the proof is always in the pudding. It's only gonna happen when people see results, and so, what we've gotta do is to continue to promote and make people feel like, hey, if you've got the skill sets and you apply, you've got a good honest chance, just like the next person does. So, we, we've gotta try to promote that and, and, you know, tear down that wall that, that exists and has existed there for a long time. And then, I think we need to continue from, another thing I see is that we promote and develop programs to advance internal employees. When you start moving up to the professional and, and the technical and some of the other areas, well, these people in these other areas that, that need to feel like they have an opportunity, but they have to get the training, and, and we lay out what that training is, so that, that there can be some upward movement, if you can, in advancement inside the existing ranks. And I think you pointed that out as you were talking, that's an area, especially some of those where you see we're shooting for eighty and we're sitting at thirty-five. So, I, I, I thank y'all for the work you're doing, and it's a process, but we've gotta continue to move the process forward, and, and there's a lot of, in my opinion, we, we've, we've gotta tear down some of the old walls if we're gonna be successful. Have some any questions, comments? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Okay, the consent agenda. Counsel, is there any item on a consent agenda that you'd like to consider separately? If not, may I have a motion? Have a motion. Second in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Okay, zoning, public hearing items, a public hearing to consider, M. eleven-oh-two, amending the City of Longview Future Land Use Map. Mr. Michael Shirley?
Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of counsel, Mr. Willard. The city, we are asking to amend the Future Land Use Map, which is a component of our comprehensive plan in an area that is adjacent to Northeastman Road, behind the Target Town Crossing Development. This area previously was designated for residential, low-density residential through some of the development that's occurred out there, and it's a proposed development that's on the next item. We're requesting to amend that comprehensive plan to allow for the appropriate development of the retail there. And so, that's just a, kind of a house cleaning, housekeeping item to make the comprehensive plan in line with the development that is occurring out there.
Okay, questions, comments, counsel? This item requires a public hearing. Public hearing is now open, and I do not have any speaker cards. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that'd like to speak to this, this item, or this matter? If not, the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion? Have a motion. Second in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Item B, to consider application P.D. eleven-oh-seven. Mr. Shirley?
Thank you, Mayor Dean. The applicant is requesting to rezone from Single Family Five to Planned Development General Retail, to allow for mixed-use development. This is a copy of the proposed site plan, and it is just for the development of this phase in this area right here. It is for an assisted living campus that will include a main building approximately eighty-three thousand square feet, with ninety rooms, maximum height of thirty-eight feet. The campus will also include twelve cottages that will be approximately thirteen hundred square feet each, have a maximum height of twenty-two feet. Minimum setbacks for the site will be twenty-five feet in the front and back, ten feet for both sides. The Planned Development Site Plan includes one hundred and twenty-seven parking spaces, provided for the main assisted area, and two parking spaces for each cottage. The other areas just kind of show what is proposed for future development, just as an example, and they're not asking for approval of that. It does include the extension of Hawkins Parkway all the way through, and will include a sidewalk on the north side of Hawkins Parkway to the residential development in the future.
Sidewalk queen over here. Sidewalk seller.
We're, we're very, staff's very happy to see some, some development occurring there. You know, back when the, the development was first moving forward, there's planned residential, but we're glad to see that there's a good mix, that it's not just strip center development, but it, it goes in line with what we're looking for for retiree-type development, and goes in with our, our designation with that. So, with that, staff recommends approval as well as planning and zoning commission.
Questions, comments? Just so the public knows, this is being filed by Abbey Development, and it's located at east of Hawkins Park, Parkway and west of Tryon Road, and I've had some people call about what's going on behind the theater and whatnot, and that's this, this road coming in. Okay? That's right. It's a public-private partnership. And it's really and truly not our, I mean, we have a lot of retirement area, but it's really, I think, our first major retirement community project, so... This item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. I have one speaker card from Brian Clark. Brian's a developer, but he's here strictly for questions. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to this matter that didn't get the fill of card out? Okay, if not, the public hearing is closed. Any questions of Mr. Clark, counsel? Okay, thank you for being here, Brian. May I have a motion? Motion second in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Item C has been withdrawn. We go to item D. Public hearing, consider application Z. eleven-twenty. Mr. Shirley?
Thank you, Mayor Dean. The applicant is requesting to rezone from Single Family SF-two to Single Family SF-four. This is on the corner of Hawkins Parkway and Bill Owens. A little background on, on this corner, in the past, we've had several attempts at rezoning the property for non-residential uses. I'm gonna go ahead and skip towards the Future Land Use Map, and it actually designates this area for light intensity business, which would be like retail or office neighborhood services. And, you know, in, in the past, the, the neighborhood and adjacent property owners have opposed the, the non-residential development. What the applicant is wanting to do is just to rezone it to the SF-four, which would allow a little bit smaller lot. Because of the location and, and some of the previous development that he's done, he's wishing to do a shared common driveway for the development, instead of having the individual driveways, which is typical on Bill Owens, which is a safety factor that we're very much in favor of. And in order to kind of offset some of those costs, he needs to get an additional lot out of it. So, we're talking about a ten-foot width reduction from, from what's required now. The home size, although the city minimum's dropped to like a thousand, as opposed to the twelve, fourteen-hundred that's required, I believe his intentions are to build in the eighteen to twenty-two hundred square foot range. So, he's gonna be building homes that are very similar, that are along Bill Owens, and would be a, a great development opportunity there, as opposed to some of the retail that we've had in the past, so...
Mr. Shirley, where would the common drive be located?
He, he is still working on that. It's my thought that there, there will be one entrance that'll come in here, and, and then, there'll be another one either here, or he may try to take it over to Hawkins Parkway.
Boy, there's lots of traffic. Get that Bill Owens light headed north. Whoa, it's big. Okay, any questions? Okay...
Just a clarification, Mr. Shirley, y'all are, one of the reasons why you like this is because of the road that's being put in there, right? And we don't have ten or fifteen houses with more driveways coming onto Bill Owens.
That's one of the reasons. That makes it more palatable, but we're just in favor of seeing some residential development there, and if, and if it means reducing the lot size by ten foot to maybe get maybe one, maybe two additional lots in there, that's not a big increase in density, and we feel that it, it still fits in with what is consistent on Bill Owens. Maybe not so much, you know, in the adjacent neighborhoods, because those are a little bit larger lots and larger homes, but we are on the backside facing Bill Owens, so we feel that that is an appropriate development. And then, the shared driveway just makes it more palatable for us, makes it a safer project.
Any other questions? Oh, Ms. Allen?
Excuse me. Just wanted to make a comment, going back to my years on planning and zoning, maybe eight, eight, ten years back or so, several developers have tried to develop this area in light intensity business, and it just didn't work out. So, I think this is a good step forward, that a developer's willing to step up and do residential housing in this area.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? The item requires a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. I have one speaker card from Mr. Jerry Bell.
Hello, I'm Jerry Bell, eleven-on-seven, Amy Scott Court. I have the lot that is two lots down from the far end of Mr. Pierce's land there. We're not opposed to the land being developed. We're not opposed to the trees being cut down. What we're concerned about is what can be built on that property. Right now, it's zoned SF-two. It fits in with the neighborhood. That's, that's what we bought, when we bought our house, we knew that it was zoned to fit the neighborhood. Now, if you rezone this, there's nothing that's gonna require Mr. Pierce to build his two thousand square foot homes. He can go in tomorrow and say, you know, I just can't, don't think I can do that anymore. But I, I can build a thousand square foot home there, and a thousand square foot home will sell. And it'll sell faster than a two thousand square foot home. There's not a builder in town that wouldn't buy that piece of property right there with it zoned SF-four, strictly because you build starter homes, and, and they would immediately sell. Now, in my opinion, right now, we've got a win-win situation for everybody. Sorry, I'm, I'm not a public speaker or anything, so bear with me.
No problem.
Right now, we have a win-win situation for everybody. Mr. Pierce is gonna build on his eight lots. He's gonna build a two thousand square foot home, he says. The city is gonna have money coming in from his building. Everybody in the neighborhood who bought, based on that being SF-four, is happy. Everybody's happy. There's no possibilities of one thousand square foot homes being built in there. It's a win-win for everybody. Everybody walks out of this room happy. The city's got eight houses that he's fixing to build in there, and income coming in from that. If you rezone that, there's, he's not obligated to, to build what he says he wants to do right now. He has no obligations whatsoever. So, why would you give him that and, and put our property at risk? If you put, I, I don't know if it was SF-four, how, how far can you squeeze those lots down? Can they be squeezed down to where you could get fourteen, one thousand square foot homes there? That, that's our concern. He also has property, I'm assuming that, that Mr. Pierce owns the property from Ben Hogan up to my lot. Now, he hasn't brought, he hasn't made an issue of what he's gonna do with that. Do you own that property? So, it's, it's gonna be coming at a second time. He don't, he don't want to try to get it rezoned right now and squeeze my property in. So, I, if he gets that rezoned to SF-four, then my property has to be rezoned. It's useless as SF-two, if property on both sides of it is SF-four.
So, so, so your lot extends back into the property that, that's on Ben Hogan and Hawkins?
I, I bought the lot...
Where, where is your property?
I live on seven Amy Scott.
Yeah, that's his home right there. Now, where's, and you have additional property behind you?
I own, I own the lot behind my house, yes.
Okay, that goes, so...
My neighbor owns his lot. My neighbor to the left there owns his lot also.
Okay, so it's two lots.
To the right of me, those three lots there are owned by Mr. Pierce. He will be, as soon as he gets this rezoned, he'll be going down wanting that rezoned. And then, he can build the same thing, four or five, you know, one thousand square foot homes. I mean, there, there's nothing to keep him from changing his mind. And who would not want, what builder would not want to be able to build a one thousand square foot home in amongst twenty-five thousand square foot neighborhood?
Mr. Bell, that, that, we have had a dilemma over... Mr. Bell, that, we have had a dilemma over that piece of property for years. I mean, since I've been on the council, this is probably the third time that this has come back.
That's true.
And there's been a whole lot more neighbors that have been sitting in this, in this chamber on some of the other proposals versus this one. I'm not sure legally if we can attach a, you know, something to this zoning that holds Mr. Pierce to a two thousand square foot minimum home. Mr. Shirley shaking his head.
Well, like I said, that's our concern, it's not.
Excuse me just one second, let's get our city attorney. What is that?
Right, whatever's allowed under SF4 would be what would be allowed in there. If you wanted to have controls on it, you'd have to come back as a planned development.
Mr. Pierce bought that piece of property as a businessman with intentions to make as much money as he can. And that's business, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. As soon as this gets rezoned to SF4, that property is probably a lot more valuable than what he paid for.
Mrs. Shirley, why, if you did the PD to, I mean, could you do the same thing with the lots and that sort of thing?
Yes, if there were a recommendation to come back with a planned development, what the applicant would have to do is then come back with a survey showing where the lots were gonna be subdivided to show how many lots we could get in there, and then also put the lot size restrictions, the minimum finished, the minimum floor square footage restrictions on, and put all those details in on the, and make that the zone.
But I guess my question is, I understand that, but could he put the same number of lots in with the PD that he'd be able to do in SF4?
Yes, and the planned development would allow him to, flexibility to do some different design like that, that may not be allowed under the SF2, and still put protections in place. And we see that more when we're looking at people that wanna do lot sizes like the SF5, where it's real small and the minimum square footage is five hundred. Let's keep in mind also that the SF2 still allows for fourteen hundred square foot, so we're not talking about a huge difference there. You know, and one of the things I would say towards that is that the market's gonna generate what the developers are gonna build. It's not gonna make a whole lot of sense for a developer to build a handful of houses in a thousand to twelve hundred square foot range that's completely surrounded by twenty-five hundred square foot homes. They're just not gonna get the comps on it, for one, which means they're not gonna be able to get loans and sell them.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but that makes no sense whatsoever.
Okay.
I mean, it absolutely makes no sense. That's just the opposite of what he said. I mean, totally the opposite. I mean, who would not want to buy a starter home in a big, nice neighborhood?
Sure, I know people would wanna buy them, but I don't know that the banks would lend money because they're not, there's nothing to comp them on.
But that's not, that's not, that's really not for us to assume. Okay.
Here's what I say.
Why don't you get up to the speak, to the mic, 'cause we can't hear you.
I don't believe Mr. Pierce is, is not gonna build, build if he cannot get this rezoned. I think he's gonna build, and that's great. If it matches the neighborhood, that's great. We don't have a problem with that. Let him build it. If he has to figure out some way to come up with the extra money to pay for, you know, he says he wants to build, to squeeze in two extra houses, well, make him figure out some other way to pay for the extra road or whatever. You know, don't even throw out there the possibility that the value of our neighborhood could go down if he decides just to sell the property or allow somebody else to develop it.
Okay.
Let me ask y'all this. Do you not agree that if ten, one thousand square foot homes were built on that property, that it would not hurt the value of everybody on Amy Scott? What is your opinion?
Go ahead.
SF2, it's what you say, minimum fourteen hundred square foot? Would you be satisfied with fourteen hundred square foot opposed to a thousand square foot?
Not really, but, 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 but he's within his, he's within his rights to do that. Nobody can complain about that. I mean, we wouldn't be here if, we don't have to be here if he wanted to build fourteen hundred square foot homes. He just build them. He's within, he's within the regulations, you know? I don't wanna see a one thousand square foot home in my backyard.
Why do we keep going to a thousand square feet?
Because that's what he can do, that's what somebody can do.
Well, we're making assumptions here, are we not? Why don't we hear from Mr. Pierce?
Well, we're making an assumption that he didn't wanna do anything. Who knows what he's gonna do?
And that's one of the things that with zoning changes that we see from time to time, because that's a minimum that that zoning would allow for. Hopefully, in the future, we'll be changing those, 'cause from time to time, we have red flags that pop up with rezones because of our minimums are kind of outdated. But that is definitely a concern there.
Okay, counsel, all right, Ms. Bell, hang a second. We've given you, your beeper went off at self-time, so I'd ask you to sit down. We've gotten your point. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak to this matter? Okay, if not, oh, Mr. Pierce, come on up, and we'll ask you to fill out a speaker card. Go ahead, right there.
Okay, I just wanted to ask or answer any questions that he might have. The intentions the surveyor has right now for the plans that I'm planning on doing in this property is a nineteen-hundred-and-eighty-three square foot house, and that's how he's trying to base the lots on this floor plan to actually get in there. So that's the ideal house plan. There's no way, I would have to sell the houses, if I built a thousand square foot house, I'd have to sell it a hundred and fifty-three dollars a square foot or thereabout, meaning that would bring the value of his property actually up. But there's nobody that's gonna pay that kind of money for a starter house, so.
Don't you also own and have developed some property further to the south on Bill Owens?
No, sir, actually, on Spring Hill Road and Vinish Trail, I've developed, or I didn't develop that subdivision, but I've built probably ninety percent of the houses that are in there since March.
You're thinking of David Kerner.
Okay, that's right, you had met with, you had met with him. Okay, but I mean, this isn't, you've done other projects.
Correct.
Okay, so, and I think, you know, people could look at the projects that you've had, and you typically haven't shown as part of your business model to build a thousand square foot homes. You know, this property's come up several different times, all right.
What's the average, Mr. Pierce, do you know the average square footage of the homes going south along Bill Owens that would be south of your development?
No, sir, I really don't, to be honest. I haven't researched. I know that further down Bill Owens, there's some that are probably in the fifteen hundred square foot range.
I would suspect you're right. I live just down the street from this, and I, let me just say, I think Mr. Pierce is a man of character. I think he'll build a good quality home. I'm sure it's not what Mr. Bell wants to hear, but I think if he tells us he's gonna build a nineteen-hundred-and-eighty-three square foot house, that's what he's gonna build. And, let me finish, please, let me finish, please, thank you. I also think that based upon what I know of the houses he builds, that it will actually be an improvement to the homes and to the neighborhood on that street that faces off of Bill Owens. And I would be much less concerned about the much larger homes where Mr. Bell lives, where you have to go around Hawkins, enter from Ben Hogan, and then turn up Amy Court. So in other words, what I'm saying is, if someone's driving down those neighborhoods, which does have larger homes, I don't think they're gonna have any concern about homes on the backside that Mr. Pierce might build that are commensurate with the street Bill Owens already has. I don't really see any negative impact.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Pierce? Anything else? Sir, we, do you have any other comments?
No.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Counsel, any other comments? Go ahead.
Was a PD considered in this?
No, we did not, not consider a PD as an option because we wanted to come forward and see what the neighborhood felt. You know, in the past, we had tried PDs for the non-residential, being that it was residential zoning, we felt that was the best and most appropriate use. We didn't feel that PD was the best way to approach it at this time, because he would have to go a little farther and actually have surveying work done, lay the lots out. This would have allowed him just to move forward in concept.
So when this item came before P and Z, how many, in addition to Mr. Bell, how many other people opposed, you know, this SF4 change?
There were, there were a few that opposed it, primarily property owners that live along Amy Scott. I myself haven't talked to anybody on the phone, but my office staff have fielded a few phone calls from people that live a little farther out, and several of them that have called and found out what's actually going on, that it's gonna be residential. We're okay with it at that point.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'd also like to add, I didn't get a phone call from anybody, and I wish we'd had a chance to talk before this, Mr. Bell, because I was under the impression from the people I've talked to that this was a popular decision for the most part, especially considering what could have gone in for some of the other hypothetical retail-type establishments. So while I'm sorry that that's not the case, I'm telling you, I've had, most of my constituents have not had any problem ringing me up, and they had a problem with the development in my, in my district, and not a single soul called me on this particular development.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Shirley? Okay, thank you, Mr. Shirley. Counsel, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion and a second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, counsel, we go to items of community interest.
We've got one more zoning item.
Where's it at?
Item E.
Golly, I was trying to get over there, and Mr. Sims kinda quick, wasn't it, Mr. Sims? Okay, yes. Okay. Oh, yeah. This is a public hearing to consider application S1107 filed by Tanya Sanchez. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit, SUP, for a mobile home park located in the Man's Survey on 212 Delroy Street. This is the site plan for the mobile home park. The applicant, this is an area that was annexed within the last couple of years as part of the annexation that we have done. Along Delroy Street, there was an existing mobile home that was annexed in that they lived in. Shortly after annexation, there was another mobile home moved in. The applicant didn't know that there was rules against that, went through the permit process to get electrical permits and all, and at that point, we explained the rules. And since that time, she's been working to get the site plan and try to meet the requirements for a mobile home park so that she can expand the non-conforming property. The mobile home park ordinance does require that it be a minimum of three trailers or manufactured homes to qualify as a mobile home park. That's really the only way that she could qualify to add an additional manufactured home there. So what we see here is the site plan that does conform and meet our requirements for a mobile home park. And as you can see here, the area is zoned agriculture. It is just directly across the street and down the road from a mobile home park that was recently permitted and is currently under construction. The future land use map shows this area for high-intensity business, so this is definitely lower intensity than commercial use. And then here is an aerial view of the area. You do have some single-family residential down here and a single-family home next to it. I would be happy to answer any questions. Staff and P and Z do recommend approval.
Okay, questions, Mr. Shirley? If not, this item requires a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. I do have Ms. Sanchez available, if there's any questions, Ms. Sanchez? Any questions, Ms. Sanchez? Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to this matter that didn't fill out a speaker card? If not, the public hearing is closed. Counsel, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion? Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay. Let me, just for the public, when we have these zoning items that require a public hearing, the people that do fill out a speaker card to speak for or against a matter are given a period of time to do that, and there's a little beeper sitting right there to kind of keep them to where they know their timing, and in most cases, if somebody asks for more time, we give them the time. And tonight, I think, in the case of this item D, we actually gave the gentleman, we turned the buzzer off, so, but that is what the policy is. Okay, items of community interest. Mr. Sims.
I wish that Mayor Dean, the council, the citizens will press forward to help me as I do my best to stop the killing on Enterprise Street. If East Texas Animal Shelter doesn't have the facilities to keep new dogs away from the general population, then they should shut the doors. I hope the citizens, Mayor Dean, and the rest of the council will work hard to raise some money to build a city-run shelter. I pray that the Lord will put a burden on our hearts to get this done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sims. Mr. Williams.
First of all, Mayor, I would like to say it was good to see my fellow councilmen back for our first meeting this year, and I hope everybody had a safe and happy New Year. And I would like to say to the mayor that my family and I had him in our prayers during the bereavement time in the loss of his mother, and that also, I would like to just welcome everybody out this weekend to all the MLK celebrations around our city, and hope that you will be able to come out and make it to some of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren.
Ditto.
Ditto. Okay. Mr. Phillips? Ms. Manley? Mr. Allen?
Just wanna say, I hope everybody had a wonderful Christmas. We've got a new year ahead of us in Longview, Texas, we're in a very prosperous place, and wish everybody a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, the city of Longview offices will be closed January sixteenth in observation of Martin Luther King Junior Day. The MLK parade is Saturday, January fourteenth at 10:00 a.m. For more information, call Broughton Center at nine oh three, two three seven, one two seven six. I'm looking forward to being on the fire truck again, where hopefully it'll be nice and warm. I love operating the horn. Okay, and we, we need volunteers. You can apply to serve for the city's boards and commissions. You may apply by going to our website, www.longviewtexas.gov. Click on the boards and commission picture featured on the front page. From there, you can email an application to the city manager's office, or print an application and mail it, fax it, or just bring it by to the city. Give it to Judy. If you do not have access to a computer, you may call Judy at nine oh three, two three seven, ten twenty-one, and an application will be mailed to you. The application deadline is March first. Also, I just wanna thank, you know, the community and council, and, I mean, people from throughout, you know, the city that sent plants and flowers to my mother's funeral. She was big with that. She worked in the yard till about the day she fell and fractured her pelvis, but she was eighty-seven years old and raised six bad little boys and one sweet little girl, so she said, or my dad said. But, you know, God had her in a special place, and she had laid everything out, and she was ready to go. And I tell you, I didn't have a chance really to mourn but to celebrate a life, and she's in a much better place that I hope we can all get to. So, again, thank all of you very much. Counsel, meeting's adjourned.